Board of Education meeting for April 10th, 2024. I would like to welcome everyone here tonight, those of you joining us and those of you joining us via live stream. And I will start with our invocation and pledge of allegiance by Ms. Vicki Watson.
Could you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this day and thank you for all that you do for us. And I pray to your heavenly Father that you will please help us tonight to make good decisions for our students and our staff in Stanley County schools. Just let us know that we are doing the right thing for them. And Lord, I hope and pray that we love them as much as you love us. I ask these things in thy name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on our agenda tonight is recognitions. I will now turn it over to Dr. Jared Dennis.
So we have, good afternoon, by the way. Thank you. We have some people that we want to recognize, students and staff. There was a district spelling bee winner, Hank Nelson. He cannot be with us tonight, so we're going to try to recognize him at another time. Next is our Stanley Stars. And first, we want to identify and recognize our Stanley Stars from Central Elementary School. So I'd like to call up Ms. Karen Honeycutt, curriculum assistant first.
We have a statement that the principals wrote, "But each month, Stanley County Schools is proud to recognize two classified and two certified employees through the Stanley Stars Awards Program. The employees were nominated by their principals, who also shared a brief overview of why they were nominated. This month, we recognize, of course, the Stanley Stars at Central and South Stanley High School. These employees were surprised by a visit from Dr. Dennis and were also given a $25 gift card sponsored by the NEOMIA Project. And we'd like to thank the NEOMIA Project for the $1,500 donation they gave to cover the cost of these gifts to our employees." And of course, at Central, we have Karen Honeycutt, classified, and Kayla, and I hope I pronounced her name correctly, Kursinoff, the certified teacher. And Principal Johnson wrote the following about Ms. Honeycutt. "Since joining the Central staff in September, Karen has jumped in with her whole staff since day one. Her flexibility and capacity to work with students across all grade levels makes her our go-to in-house classroom sub when coverages aren't secured. She's able to facilitate instruction and manage the classroom as if the teacher is still there. Karen is dedicated to making sure our students and teachers get what they need every single day. Whether it be clerical tasks to save teachers' time, mopping floors to help our custodial staff, covering classrooms or organizing classroom libraries, she is always finding the next thing to do. Her strong work ethic and daily approach makes it clear that Karen loves our students and staff, and it is clear that she loves working at Central." Congratulations. And then, and our next at Central is Kayla Kursinoff. I hope I pronounced it correctly. And Principal Johnson wrote the following. "Kayla is a strong instructional leader in her classroom and a true teacher leader who works tirelessly to problem-solve solutions that impact the entire school because she cares about our school, our students, and her colleagues. Instructionally, Kayla is innovative and reflective, constantly adapting her instruction to better meet the needs of her students, and it shows in their performance data. In her class, students are always engaged in group work, independent work, and small groups. She has a phenomenal rapport with every student in every grade level and holds every student accountable to meeting our behavioral expectations. Kayla is also a leader, serving as a BT mentor. She manages the complexities of this role with ease, doing everything she can to help her mentees succeed. Kayla is often the first one to arrive in the morning, giving her time to work with students and facilitate student clubs. Overall, our fifth-grade team, school and students, are stronger because of the impact Kayla makes every single day." From Dr. Johnson, congratulations. Next is South Stanley High School, and the two Stanley Stars are Lisa Park, classified, and Meredith Henshaw, certified. If you can come up front, please. Principal Fallon wrote the following about Lisa Park. "Lisa Park is a cornerstone of South Stanley High School, serving as our testing coordinator and a vital guidance team member. Her dedication shines through in her weekly announcements to students and families, ensuring they are well-informed and supported throughout the academic year. She goes above and beyond by assisting students with their questions in various areas, showcasing her commitment to their success. Her meticulous attention to detail and adherence to timelines are commendable, ensuring all tasks are completed efficiently and effectively. As a result, students, parents, and staff trust her expertise and guidance. We are incredibly grateful for her contributions to our school." Principal Fallon wrote the following about Meredith Henshaw. "Meredith Henshaw is an invaluable teacher at South Stanley High School. She radiates positivity, and her dedication to her work is unmatched. She goes above and beyond her role by supporting students and staff, especially in departmental vacancies, showcasing her commitment to their success. As part of the school improvement team, she plays a crucial role in creating a supportive environment for our students. Additionally, she is an advisor for the National Honor Society and a prom committee member, which further demonstrates her passion for student development and involvement in school activities. Mrs. Henshaw is a quiet leader. Students deeply respect her for her kindness and unwavering support. Her presence enriches our school community, and we are fortunate to have her on our team." By Ms. Fallon, congratulations to our Stanley Stars at South Stanley High School.
Dr. Dennis, do you want them to wait?
We can do everyone one time, yeah. So next, we, I'm going to do the Reed Bowl State Champions. The Reed Bowl State Champions this year for the entire state of North Carolina is the fourth grade, in fourth grade is Indy Elementary School. They're first in North Carolina and third in the globe around the world. They logged in almost 650,000 reading minutes to beat out 9,000 other teams. And if I'm not mistaken, they won it last year as well. So I'd like to call up Basilio Hildago and Carrie Honeycutt to represent Indy for the Next, I want to recognize the Stanley County Arts Council Fine Arts Educator of the Year. And so I have David Cartrette and Renee Van Horn from the Arts Council. Are they here?
David Cartrette cannot be here tonight. He is out of town, so I am representing the Arts Council tonight. Good evening, Dr. Dennis and members of the Stanley County Board of Education. My name is Renee Van Horn, and I'm the executive director of the Stanley County Arts Council. This year, the Stanley County Arts Council is celebrating its 50th anniversary with the theme of 50 years of cultivating creativity. We've been able to cultivate creativity through many partnerships, including the ones we have with Stanley County Schools. Each year, we conduct the cultural education program, which provides each student through pre-K through 10th grade an opportunity to broaden their knowledge and exposure to the arts by attending a professional performance in various genres of the arts, including theater, poetry, puppetry, dance, kid-friendly opera, and music. But we also expose them to the genres of music that they may not be familiar with, such as blues and jazz. This year, we also conducted a bookmark contest with the assistance of Lynn Plummer, who previously served our board as chairman. This bookmark contest encouraged the students to portray their love of the arts. These students were honored at our recent Celebration of the Arts Awards ceremony and our museum exhibit, Ribbon Cutting. We have made banners of each of the winning designs that are also on display at the Stanley County History Center. I encourage you all to take a moment to experience that display of the history of the arts in Stanley County and also look at the exhibits of the bookmarks. I've also brought you all your own personal packet of all the bookmarks. They, we printed 12,000. They will be distributed to the principals tomorrow at the principals' meeting and then through the schools at each level, and then the remaining ones will be distributed through the public libraries this summer. And tonight, I would like to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present our annual Fine Arts Educator of the Year Award, affectionately known as the Jim Kennedy Award, in loving memory of the longtime arts advocate, teacher, and coach, Mr. James Kennedy. The award recognizes a fine arts teacher in the Stanley County Public School system who has made a significant positive impact on the arts and education, and who have inspired students to pursue, appreciate, and respect the fine arts. Only principals or assistant principals can nominate a teacher. It is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Kim Dean, Assistant Principal at Locust Elementary, who nominated this year's winner. And I will let Ms. Dean tell you more about this year's recipient and why she nominated
Hello, everyone. So I have previously worked at an A-plus arts magnet school, so I'm used to high-quality work within our school buildings. When I look at the artwork in Locust Elementary School, it far surpasses what I am used to as stellar artwork. Ms. Starnes' hard work outshines all that I have seen. She goes above and beyond the scope of her responsibilities as a visual arts teacher in our school. She has created a YouTube channel, which she uses during her instruction, and this allows students in a short timeframe to look at what they are going to create, look at all the materials they need to use, and then also see a finished product of what it could look like at the end. She exposes her students to various mediums to create and monitors student mastery of all art standards. She has abundant patience and ensures that all students feel successful in her class. I cannot think of anyone who is more purposeful and intentional in their lesson plans. Ms. Starnes is a kind and compassionate teacher who treats all students with dignity and respect. Ms. Starnes, Ms. Julie Starnes, is truly worthy of this recognition. And that is our winner for this year, Ms. Julie Starnes.
Ms. Starnes forgot her award. It actually was presented to her at Celebration of the Arts. It's a beautiful glass fuse bowl that GHA creates for us each year for our Arts Person of the Year and our Arts Educator of the Year. So imagine her holding a beautiful, colorful glass bowl.
Madam Chair and Board Members and guests, tonight, we recognize and celebrate our Stanley County Schools Support Staff of the Year, employees who represent the best of what is happening in the school district every day. These staff members support learning at many levels, in the schools, outside of the classroom, and at the district level. They all play an important role in assisting students to reach their potential in school and to achieve future dreams in life. They serve students and work with colleagues, going far beyond their assigned duties. Each Support Staff of the Year employee we honor tonight is someone who has demonstrated that every single day, they play a vital part in changing lives for the better. They also represent colleagues across the district who work to promote student success. These outstanding individuals were honored with a reception at the county office earlier this evening and were given a small token of appreciation, which included a beautiful plant grown by the North Stanley High School FFA Club members. So at this time, I would like to ask Debbie Rolls and Dr. Dennis to assist me in recognizing
Good evening. First, from Applemore High School, we have Ms. Brenda Watson.
Indy Elementary, Heather Chastain, who I don't think is able to be here tonight.
Millingport Elementary, Carrie Harwood.
North Stanley High School, Michael McGee. My apologies. I even spoke to her at the reception.
North Stanley Middle School, Renda Udi.
Oakboro Choice STEM, Chelsea Williams, who I really don't think is here tonight.
Stanfield Elementary, Jessica Medlin, who I believe is also unable to be here. And I believe Mr. Walter Smith, or Walter Lee from South Stanley High is unable to be here. From South Stanley Middle School, we have LeAnn Misimer.
The star's not here. Star Honeycutt from Stanley Early College is not with us tonight. From Stanley STEM Early College, we have Mika Crump.
From Stanley Academy Learning Center, we have Melanie Hall.
And overall, from the district, we have one support staff representative to represent auxiliary services at the district level. And the winner selected from the auxiliary services is Ms. Wendy Cook from Child Nutrition. And continuing to expand the recognitions this year, we have one winner from the central office support staff nominees, and the overall winner for that is Ms. Hope Miller from the Office of Superintendent. Congratulations to each of you and for the hard work that you do each and every day in and out of the classrooms for all that you do. Thank you.
If you guys will. If all of our recipients will just stay where you are, board members, if you'll join me down front, we'll congratulate them all. And before everyone gets gone, we actually have, we actually have one more recognition.
Congratulations.
Before you guys all leave, we have one more recognition.
It won't take but a minute, then we'll go into closed session, so.
Thank you.
You won't have to walk out in front of everyone. Just give us five minutes. So this is actually a late recognition. I tried to do this recognition last year, and there were some technological difficulties. But I could, BJ, he'll come up front and center, please.
We may or may not have sprung this on him, so.
I had no idea he was going to be here tonight. But for some reason, I was able to spot him when he came through the door. I don't know why. No, I'd had something prepared at the time, BJ, so I'm just going to kind of go off the cuff here. But last time, we tried to get together, and you were gracious enough for your time, and we had some technology issues. I know you had practice and things going on that was very important as well. But we just want to thank you for all the stuff you've done for the community, especially the children. And you've donated so much of your time and your resources where, you know, maybe a lot of people wouldn't, and you've really brought back to your community. And we just can't appreciate you more for that. I don't really know how to quantify that in words right now, other than just thank you so much for all you've done for our community and our students, my kids and everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
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 our award recipients. We really appreciate all the hard work and dedication that you guys put into our school system. Up next on our agenda is closed session. On the second, I would like to ask for a motion to go into closed session for student matters, NC Journal Statute 143-318A1116, student matters, NC Journal Statute 143-318.11A3.
I move we go into closed session.
I have a motion and a second? All in favor? Any opposed? We're now in closed session. Okay, I'm going to call us back into open session. Next on our agenda is public comment. We don't have anyone signed up to speak tonight, so we're going to move on to our consent agenda. On the consent agenda tonight, I have the minutes from the March 7, 2024, regular meeting, and then March 18, 2024 work session. Board members, you've had those minutes in your packet and board docs for review. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The consent agenda has been passed. Next, I have committee reports. Up first tonight is facilities with Ms. Robin Whitaker.
We did have a meeting on 3/27. Your minutes are not included tonight due to spring break, and it was a pretty lengthy meeting, so you should have those next, next month. Dr. Dennis is also a little later on in the agenda going to talk about.
Thank you. Next up, I have finance, Mr. Lisk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our committee did meet on March 14, which was a follow-up from the March 1 meeting to discuss some updates in our budget request, our local budget request to the county commissioners. That has been submitted, it's approved by the board at our work session. I can't remember that exact date, but in March, the commissioners do have that. But just to give the public some updates as to what's going to be asked, it's a little over $21 million in per pupil local current expense. It would address things like taking our teacher supplements, our certified teacher supplements, which is currently at 5%. We would like to take that to 8%. Our neighboring county, just to give you some, an example, Cabarrus is at 12. I saw in their request that they're, to their commissioners to go to 13%. But we feel like going 8% has been our target, and we'd like to get there. Other things would be addressing some of our higher need schools. There's roughly a little over $800,000 in a request for that. The new classified pay scale, if you're not sure what that is, think about cafeteria workers, custodians, bus drivers. Some are state paid through the allotment, some are county paid. And Department of Public Instruction gave this school system one more pay scale, which all of the school systems must go to. So that's what they're going to pay, the state-paid employees, and of course, under fair labor laws, we have to pay them that as well. That's been a longstanding issue in the county. You know, anyone that's worked here for a long time knows that they could work for 20 years and not have a raise. So it's a positive thing, but there is additional funding. I think, I don't have it in front of me, was about $1.1 million to meet that mandate. But again, it is a mandate, but I say it's something that this board and committee has requested over the last two budget cycles to, to what I would call correct the pay scale. Some other things were curriculum needs. So we wanted to address some of our CTE programs and partnerships. In other words, trade opportunities for students. We wanted to address some college prep programs and just provide resources for some of our high schools to give those students more opportunity. That's, that's pretty much it. There's some smaller things, like for band, we wanted to, and I believe it's around 50% at the middle school, maybe 33% at the high school, and our athletic director and coaches pay. That, for example, I believe it was Dr. Dennis, if you didn't work for the school system, you got paid differently than a coach that, that worked for the school system, maybe as a, on staff. So we, we want to make that more competitive and even and fair. I would say the, the other part of the budget request comes in capital outlay, which just means how many Band-Aids we're going to put on the schools, fixing them up, maintaining them. We've got, I think the estimate was around $90 million of just deferred maintenance. So that, you know, at $9 million, I think is roughly the request for this year, we would put some Band-Aids on schools for the next 10 years. So there's hundreds of millions of dollars of capital needs. There are some things I think that the school board is within their control that, that we can do. But we have things such as HVAC units that have, have to be replaced. We've got roofs that need to be replaced, and, and actually on our newer middle school buildings, built on the bond package 04, those have now come up where those roofs need to be replaced, and I believe they're around $250,000. So there's lots of, of, of capital outlay, outlay needs. All in, it's about a $13 million increase in, in the request. You know, I understand that, that's a lot. But to put that in perspective, according to the ability to fund locally, ranks 59th out of 115 school districts. As you know, we're 105th. Montgomery County is 54 in the mid 40s. So this puts us just under the 21-plus million dollars in per people funding, excluding capital outlay, puts us a little less than $2,500 per student, based on our current count, which is slightly below where Montgomery is on last year's numbers. So we've got to start making some strides there. I think this is a really good detailed budget, and we'll, we'll see what happens. I'm sure the commissioners will have questions, and we're going to present a detailed version of this and stream the work session, which is April 16, next Tuesday, and you'll be able to see that from a public perspective and, and some discussion amongst the board. And thank you for the time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next up, I have instructional, Ms. Gibson.
The instructional committee met March 12, and one thing that was discussed was the current proposed bell schedules that's in place, and this is only pertaining to, right now, our city schools. But there definitely is some discussion about that. There will be even more discussion, Dr. Dennis has said, looking, looking into those, that time. We had Mr. Plummer and we had Ms. Lauren Raper, who presented to us some materials. And I know, I think at the last board meeting, Mr. Plummer went into some detail about that with all the board, and just things that were being looked at. And one final thing that he said also in, in this, at the last board meeting, was the fact that we had not only Mr. Plummer, but Ms. Autry and Jennifer Honeycutt, who were going to be looking at various schools, other schools around, who are continuing that dual language program into the middle school. So then today, we had a meeting beginning at 5:15, an instructional committee meeting, and lots of information was provided for us. And I have asked Mr. Plummer if he could just give more of a summary of what we discussed, because I think that everyone, I believe everyone would be on board with what we're discussing and, and looking at, and he has some added information for us. Thank you, Mr. Plummer.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Since our last meeting, we really, at the last meeting, we just focused on the fact that we were going to go down this route of looking and seeing what's out there, what's available. And Ms. Raper has worked very hard to get her hands on some materials that other districts have used and found success with, effective curriculum across the board. And they're not just out there fishing around to find their own stuff all the time. We're giving them something to start with, that then they can build on and add their own craft to it along the way. As we have gotten those in, we have shared those out with middle school teachers and with high school teachers, so that they can be in the middle of it, and they can be involved and see what these programs have to offer. We created a Google Doc for them to go through and almost rate each of the programs as they look at them. Are they aligned with the curriculum? Are they student-friendly? Are they teacher-friendly? Do they provide the resources that you would need to be able to differentiate based on what student needs are from one class to the next, from one group to the next, from one year to the next? So teachers have been very active in helping to go through that and helping us get some data back from them. Is this something that you would want? Is this something that you would use? So that's kind of where we are with that process right now. They have gone through two of the curriculums so far. We are still working on finding some additional ones that may be out there. We don't want to leave any leaf unturned at this point. We have hit a roadblock originally with the curriculum we were looking at with Math 1, and that Math 1 curriculum just really wasn't aligning to what North Carolina state standards tell us that we need to teach, that we're supposed to teach day in and day out. And a lot of that just comes back to the fact that we're not a common core standard state. We have our own standards. They are modeled after it. They, in some ways, mirror common core standards, but it's not exactly the same. So it's hard to get these books in that don't follow what we're supposed to. We don't want to put materials in front of teaching. We need to take this part of it out because it doesn't align with what we're supposed to do. So we're looking into some other options for that. We've found some good things that are online that we can use to support if we don't have a true traditional textbook, so to speak. Same thing with biology. We're hitting a few little roadblocks with biology for the same reason, just not having that alignment. And biology teachers have been a part of those conversations to say, we don't want it if it's not what we need, if it's not going to help us. So we're definitely on pursuit to find what it is that would be effective and what they could use to be able to drive forward with that. With those conversations, we're also trying to get an estimate of what cost looks like, looking at what it would be if we signed on for a three-year plan, a five-year plan, a seven-year plan, just to give us an idea. We do have some ESSR dollars that could help support us and get this initiative started. Ms. Hatley and Ms. Raper and I met today with our federal programs consultant from DPI, just to help get some guidance on what that may look like and how we can move forward with that to put our dollars to best use, more or less. But I think it is very beneficial for our teachers to be a part of the process and give their perspective, no sense in spending money on it if it's not going to be used. We don't want to put books and put resources on a shelf or in a closet. We want to make sure that we're giving them something that they are bought into and they feel comfortable with. Thank you.
Well, you allude to visiting the other school with the dual language.
Sure. Ms. Honeycutt at West Stanley Middle School and I were able to, their dual language immersion's first year moving into the middle school, we got to see their model and, and what they do in their connexionis class. And connexionis is a, an all-inclusive, if you will, Spanish immersion class that works into their exploratory block. So those students have the opportunity to be immersed in that Spanish language, not just in science, not just in math, not just in social studies, but the course encompasses everything. It even comes with a curriculum that is straight from participate, that we don't have to go out and find stuff. That teacher has that curriculum that guides them through sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. We are going to Piedmont Middle School in Union County next week to see their version of connexionis, just to give us another opportunity to see it. The benefit of being able to go with this model also, our dual language immersion students would get the connexionis in their exploratory rotation each year, but it would also provide us that teacher that could also offer some Spanish classes as well, and being, being able to offer Spanish at a middle school level and not having to wait until they get to the high school, just to open that up as another opportunity as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do y'all have any questions?
Question. I know, kind of backing up, you were talking about the selection process, so teachers are involved in that. Is it, was there a selection to, to decide what teachers were involved in that?
All teachers have, have been involved with it. Ms. Raper has been able to get books to all of the schools and been able to have all of them have that opportunity to give their voice and their perspective on that.
Can you talk about the data collection process too, that you spoke about earlier as far as surveys and all that?
So each of them has been going through and filling out those Google forms to be able to say this connects, this doesn't connect, and we're able to pull that all back in altogether. At the instructional committee today, Mr. Sorenson asked if you had to say what percentage of teachers feel like they would like to move forward with one curriculum over the other, it was about 80% of teachers, this is a resource I would use.
I know you were talking about doing the common curriculum, and I know that our elementary schools have been doing that for like, maybe the last three years.
Correct.
So do you see that that's been an advantage?
It has definitely been beneficial. It helps for teachers, with teachers who transfer from one school to another, they get to a new school, they don't have to learn what's this school's way of teaching reading, what's this school's way of teaching math. It helps with students who are less than the exact same day, but they've got those routines under their belt, they know those programs and the strategies that are used throughout. So I think it has definitely been a beneficial thing for them. Also, another thing that was noted, even with the high school and with our quality assurance inventory visits, QAI visits that we've done this spring, rigor is a word that comes up a lot, and making sure that we're really pushing them and not just giving them surface level of what they need. Our, our kids can do these things, so what can we provide them? And our curriculum on the elementary side, a lot of teachers will tell you, it's hard, it's tough, but we've got to be able to raise that bar to get them to that standard of what truly they need to be doing at that grade level and not watering it down and giving them something lesser, because they do have the ability to do that. We've just got to push and scaffold and get them to that level.
So you say it's beneficial for the teachers. Are we seeing a gain for our students by doing that?
Yes, and honestly, I wish I had brought those numbers, but that was something that was discussed even at the Correct.
So do you see that that's been an advantage?
It has definitely been beneficial. It helps for teachers, with teachers who transfer from one school to another. They get to a new school, they don't have to learn, "What's this school's way of teaching reading? What's this school's way of teaching math?" It helps with students who are less than the exact same day, but they've got those routines under their belt. They know those programs and the strategies that are used throughout. So I think it has definitely been a beneficial thing for them. Also, another thing that was noted, even with the high school and with our quality assurance inventory visits, QAI visits that we've done this spring, rigor is a word that comes up a lot, and making sure that we're really pushing them and not just giving them surface level of what they need. Our kids can do these things, so what can we provide them? And our curriculum on the elementary side, a lot of teachers will tell you, "It's hard. It's tough." But we've got to be able to raise that bar to get them to that standard of what truly they need to be doing at that grade level, and not watering it down and giving them something lesser, because they do have the ability to do that. We've just got to push and scaffold and get them to that level.
So you say it's beneficial for the teachers. Are we seeing a gain for our students by doing that?
Yes. And honestly, I wish I had brought those numbers, but that was something that was discussed even at the state level, at the state board meeting last week, the gains that North Carolina is seeing in especially K-3 literacy, how we are outperforming where we've been, but we're also starting to outperform other districts across the country as well with that growth. You're welcome.
I think one thing that, the QAI especially, has been instrumental in showing us a lot of things that, you know, we can do, or how, what kind of things that we need to acquire to help the teachers. And, you know, there's been some anecdotal data as well, as also some data that Mr. Plummer and his teams pulled, and we definitely need to focus on the rigor. I think if we can increase the rigor, then the student performance will follow shortly.
And Dr. Dennis, just for those watching, can you explain what QAI is real quick, just so that folks know?
Quality assessment inventory, I'm sorry. I did the education speak, that's my fault. So essentially, what we do is we come in as a team. I've been on a couple of them, when time permitting, but, so you'll have a team from, of course, Lynn's team curriculum, and then we'll pull in some other individuals, whether it be school-level administrators, some curriculum coaches, or some other pertinent employees that we think would be good and trying to assess. So what we do is we go visit classrooms, we have interviews with teachers, interviews with administrators, they do data presentations for us, and we take all that and we kind of construct what the culture of the school is, and also what learning looks like at the school. And Lynn can sum it up probably a little better. He always likes to use the word triangulate.
Triangulate is the big thing. We're not, it's not a gotcha visit. We're not looking for bad, we're not looking to pinpoint individual people. It's really about the culture of the school, the instructional culture of the school, and what do we see embedded throughout the school? What do we see in first grade that we also see in fourth grade, that we also see in PE? What do we hear the principal talk about in the data presentation that the teachers come in and talk about in the teacher interview portion, that we also saw happening in EC classrooms? It's really about seeing it throughout. And we've got a lot of good things going on, and a lot of times, if we bring in some of those outside voices and perspectives that aren't working in that school every day, they see it, they notice it, now help infiltrate that throughout. Let's not keep that in these little pockets. Imagine what we could do if we could take that and spread it throughout. And it's also a great way for principals back. This is a good, solid practice. Let's make this happen with my teachers and students as well.
And I wanted you to explain that a little bit, because I know that's something that, back when I was on instructional committee, a year or so back, we would see bumps in, like, reading scores at one school, and it's like, "Well, what are they doing at that school that we can replicate somewhere else? That, you know, what's working?"
Right. Well, and I think it's very effective to use those principals and assistant principals and curriculum coaches. They're competitive folks, and we've had some principals that sit in QAI's in data rooms, and they see grade-level data on the wall, and they're taking pictures to go back and say, "We can't let this school outperform us. What are they doing to get there?" But then when they go out on that observation, what do they see happening in that classroom? How are those teachers teaching? What are students doing? We need to steal some of those practices and do those same things. It's not about one school being better than another, it's about coming together as a district as a whole.
I think another thing that, you know, we kind of learn is, we can look at all this data, this quantitative data, and, you know, how students are performing, but there's a qualitative point, too, that where culture has a big, you know, implications on how students perform as well. And so that's something we've also honed in on, especially with our interviews.
I just want to thank Mr. Plummer and the instructional committee, and any of your folks that have been out doing this and getting this data for our county, because I feel like you can learn from others, but we can also learn from the talent we have within, and so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. We've already put them on the calendar for next year.
And I really want to say, you know, I'm excited with, you know, what's being shown to us, what's out there, the resources. And also, teachers and our curriculum coaches, our assistant principals, our principals, everyone seems to like, working together because they know, again, that word rigor. They know where we need to go, where we need to be, where we need to be going. And then these resources, if they provide us that opportunity, that help for teachers, then in the long run, that help is for our students. And our students are going to grow. And, you know, that's what it's all about. And it also comes back, Mr. Lisk, to, I know we've had conversations with parents, others who, they want to see the rigor, they want to see the challenges, they want to see AP classes. You know, I see this as moving in directions for that. And I just really appreciate everybody that's working with you and Ms. Raper. Thank you for that presentation for instructional committee meetings soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that all you have, Ms. Gibson? Okay. Thank you. Next is Personnel, Dr. Lefler.
No report.
Policy, Ms. Vicky Watson.
Okay. I think we tabled 47, 20, and 13, 10 from last week. You were supposed to vote on that this week, whatever the board sees fit.
Everyone sent back to board.
Oh, was it? Okay.
I mean, I've been sent back to policy council, I have a policy committee, and we need to vet those for the policy.
Okay. So we need to have a meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I hope it's not something that will be on the work session, or is that a separate policy meeting?
Yeah.
Because that'll be a committee meeting and not a whole board meeting.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Oh, yeah, Ms. Watson. You're done? Okay. And the last one for tonight is Safety and Security, Mr. Bill Sworrenson.
No report.
Okay. That is all the committee reports. So now we are to the next item on our agenda, which is the Indy Elementary School addition. And I want to turn it over to Dr. Dennis.
Thank you. I'm sure, you know, as you are aware, we met with HM Kern, based on their email, to discuss concerns with their bid on Monday, excuse me, March 8th. After the meeting and hearing our concerns, they withdrew their bid, and we released their bond. After consulting with members of the Facilities Committee, Mr. Bennett and I reevaluated and spoke with the other two lowest bidders. After having conversations and receiving additional information, we feel confident JM Cope's. So at this time, it's a recommendation to rescind the vote for the previously approved contractor and approve JM Cope pending funding from the county.
Okay. So we have a recommendation from the superintendent to rescind the vote for the contract at the previous meeting and approve the new lowest bidder, JM Cope.
A move that we rescind our previous bid, and that we move forward with giving that bid to the lowest bidder now, which is Cope.
Okay. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Just to clarify, the, so they pulled out the bid, and the board asked for reevaluation on that.
That's correct.
And so the choices at that point were Cope, a company called O'Connor, and then Hoss, who was previously voted on. And if I remember, I don't, I was looking for the sheet, it's roughly $127,000 difference between Cope and O'Connor. I mean, Cope and Hoss are about 1.5%.
Yeah, I have to pull it up, but that sounds right.
Sounds correct. Okay.
Okay. And the general statute don't have that particular one, but it does not state just the lowest bidder. It provides some other variables for things like quality, performance, time, responsiveness. So it's not that the general statute states, and I'm just clarifying, that any board has to...
To read, no. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Questions? Okay. I have a motion and a second, so all in favor of accepting, you got something, Bill?
No.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, I thought you had a question. Of rescinding the previous bid and accepting the bid for JM Cope. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposeds? Okay. This is passed. Up next is superintendent comments.
I'll keep my comments brief today. Want to welcome everyone back from spring break. Hopefully, everyone had a good break, and you got to do something productive or something that you enjoy during that time. The weather was nice for most of the time, so hopefully, everyone enjoyed their time off. But we're back to it. We only have about five weeks, six weeks or so, before we're going to begin testing, so it's coming up quickly. As far as the days we have coming up, as there's National School Librarian Day, that's April 4th. National Assistant Principal Week is April 1st through 5th. And as far as our months, this is both Child Abuse Prevention and Autism Awareness Month. We had planned for Special Olympics. It seems like weather's not going to cooperate, so we'll be moving Special Olympics to April the 26th, and that's at South Stanley High School. Last thing is, just share a little story with you. Before break, I was asked, and I accepted the invitation, to go to Central Elementary School for their first annual egg drop. And so if you've never been to Egg Drop, it's a smashing good time. And, see what I did there? And so what you do is, you build a contraption, and you drop the egg from a certain level, and if it busts, your contraption obviously failed, and if it didn't, then, you know, you build a quality contraption that could withstand the impact, or at least let the egg withstand the impact. Now, to do this, I did not stand on a balcony, I didn't get in a chair. I got on some rendition of a scissor lift that got me about to the top of the gymnasium, or could get you there. Now, you don't know a lot about me, but I'm not a fan of heights. And the contraption I was in, I'm sure it was very secure, but it liked to move a little bit. And so, but I got up there, and I dropped the eggs, and I've never seen kids more excited for anything in my life. When that egg dropped, or when that egg made it, I should say it the other way around, when that egg made it, they cheered like they won the Super Bowl. And I mean, all of them. For their buddy, I mean, they were just having a blast, and they got to guess whether it would crack or not. And, you know, I had several different designs. A lot of them would put them in a box with, of course, shock-absorbed materials and drop them off. One person, I put it in a flamingo, and threw the flamingo over it. They made it, it was very, that good. And then there were some different designs, but, and the teacher had to do one as well. So just having said all that, it was a really good time, just watching how enthusiastic they were. I mean, even if it broke, they were patting, you know, their buddy on the back, and it was, it was a large chunk of the school, you know, they were doing it in large chunks, so it was quite a few kids there at one time. But I truly enjoyed that. I enjoyed not only looking at how smart these kids are with some of the things they come up with, that I would have never thought of, especially some materials for absorbing the shock and things like that. One kid put a parachute on his, and I was, you know, intrigued as well as how that one would do. And I just really, really had a good time. And I want to thank the staff and Dr. Johnson at Central for inviting me. I hope they make an annual event, and I'll be glad to go up anytime, put my fear aside, because I had a great time.
I was going to say, several years back, my daughter was involved in an egg drop, and we had to build a contraption, and we, too, had a parachute. But I did get to go watch the egg drop years back, and it is a very interesting day. The kids really did get into it, and if you ever get the chance, board members, I highly suggest you attend the egg drop. It's a fun time.
Well, I got up about level with the goal, but I wasn't getting enough far enough for that parachute to deploy. It tried, but it didn't quite make it.
Back then, we just put them out the window of third floors, there was no scissor lift Now, it's board member comment, I'll start down here with Mr. Lisk. Oh, wait, hold on, I'm sorry. Personnel agenda is up next. My bad. No, no. Okay. Board member comment, sorry. My screen does not work in up here, I'm having to use my personal computer down here, so. Board member comment, Mr. Lisk.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll vote. I'm going to make a vote that I think is in the best interest of a taxpayer in the school system. That's called being a fiduciary. I've heard the term frugal. If you look up the synonym for that, that's cheap. Cheap's what got us here. Cheap's what put us 105th in local funding. If you combine federal and state funding, we're 112th out of 115 districts, and we're almost dead last. Cheap's what didn't build a high school in 2005 for less than $25 million on $60 million worth of revenue in the county. We generate $100 million of revenue today, $130 million to build a high school. If you want to do the average on that, it's about a 9% inflation rate, meaning that the cost of doing that, to build and renovate, has far out exceeded our revenue in 19 years. As a fiscal conservative, that's a hidden tax. So anytime we have bids that come in front of us, they're bids. It's an estimate. It's not the final price, it's guaranteed. You're going to get architect recommendations, because they work with these contractors, and some put change orders in more frequently than others. I would make the comparison that if you put six doctors, and we've got one down here, that are brain surgeons, they're all qualified, they're all licensed, they're all approved to do the work, but I would venture to say that there's probably a difference in your top brain surgeon, maybe Dr. Carson, Ben Carson, than maybe the guy that's, or gal that's just out of med school. They're licensed and approved, but there's a difference with quality and performance. So when I look at how I evaluate my votes, that's how I help my clients day-to-day. As a fiduciary, I'm bound by regulations, so price is a variable, but the general statute also provides for quality, time, performance, and responsiveness. So I did want to provide some clarity there to that Indy project from my point of view. I'll end on a, maybe a more positive note. I want to give a shout-out to the kindergarten teachers at Locust. So I went on a field trip to Dan Nicholas Park with my daughter, and it's a bit like herding cats, with a lot of five-year-olds, six-year-olds running around. But they, and of course, you had to enter like these museums and listen to some presentations, and everyone has to be quiet, and obviously, that's extremely difficult. But they had this system, like these level systems, and everybody would go to Level Zero, which I assumed meant no talking. And so on spring break, I thought that was really cool. I was like, "Wow, they all just shut up." I'm like, "Wow, that was pretty cool. I'm going to implement this." So we went on vacation last week to Nashville, and I think I had the only two kids in Nashville, but I implemented the system. We did Level Zero was no talking, Level One was a whisper, Level Two is totally okay, Level Three is getting high, if you're at Level Four, you're in trouble. So thank you for some parenting skills from the kindergarten teachers at Locust.
Ms. Watson?
I want to thank everybody that had awards, got awards tonight. And Kathy Holland, that was one of our, she was in our staff thing. That lady has been in Stanley County schools for 45 years. Now, if that's not dedication, that's dedication for these students, and I commend her for that. She's a very sweet lady. That's just unbelievable, 40, 45 years, I'm telling you. But I hope everybody had a good vacation, and I know we don't have much left for school to be out, but our tests are going to start, so we need to buckle down and get that going, and it'll be time to be out. Everybody have a good day, or evening.
Mr. Sworrenson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to, I was going to give some applause to Ms. Holland, she's, that's a legend in Stanley County. We all live our lives with some kind of a goal. My goal is, to when I die, to know that I made a difference. That lady has made a difference for almost four and a half decades. Mad props to all of our award winners tonight. But to deviate a little bit from the school stuff and talk about my roof, it's going to rain again, okay? What happened is, about two weeks ago, wife and I were at one of our many road trips for baseball games, came home, there's a puddle on the floor. Been raining pretty hard, wind been blowing. We thought it was the washing machine, so we cleaned it up. Next time it rained, it rained the next day, the puddle's back, the washer hadn't been run, so realized, got a nice, pretty dimple in the ceiling of that room. We've got a roof leak. So I decided, I was going to do 105 out of 115 and go cheap, went to Lowe's, bought some Flex Seal. We put the ladder up against the house. I sent her up the ladder, because I can't climb ladders anymore. We fixed it with Flex Seal. Like, man, we did this great, we got off for like $30. This is cool. It's 105 out of 115. Guess what? It rained again. And the rain came back in again. The dimple's bigger, I had to pay the man, I haven't paid him yet, because I haven't got my bill. I had to pay the man to come out and do the job right. 105... 105 out of 15, I should have been paying that all along. What we're doing to our kids is we're exposing them to the rain. Last year, North Carolina teacher turnover rate, the worst it's been in 25 years. State lost 10,441 teachers. Left, they left the business, a lot of those retirees, a lot of those people. We have to compete for those folks. So when Dustin's talking about our budget and our supplements and stuff, we're trying to man, we're just trying to man our schools. We're dealing with facilities and capital outlay things that have been ignored for decades. The roof leaks in Sworson's house, he goes out, gets the roofer to come fix it. After, you know, not just roofs, it's all kinds of things. Well, my point is, the rain's going to come, all right? And it's going to get inside the house. And if we stay at 105 out of 115 as a county funding our kids, we're begging for flooding and we're begging for bad things to happen. It's absolutely not acceptable. That's all I have to say. And other than the people that you saw in front of us today, I thank God for those folks and our teachers and our admins. We're more blessed than we deserve to be in this county. Our SROs, our central office, we're more blessed than we deserve. And it's time to start paying. Let's fix the roof.
Thank you. Ms. Gibson?
I'm just going to echo what all of you said. And again, congratulations to all the recipients tonight of awards. I certainly see our principals that are still here and always here. Thank you for your dedication and for all that you do. And our central office staff as well, our SRO at the back, Ms. Jennifer Flo, thank you for all that you do. You know, I was reflecting back on some of the fun things this year. And of course, for me, it's dress up. So.
Surely not.
You know, being able to read to students. And I received some sweet cards from Oprah Choyce Dem. And you're talking about drawing like masterpieces of what the Lorax looked like. I mean, they were really, really good. It really was, I don't know, they could look right at me and draw that picture, I guess. But I really, I really enjoyed that. And so one thing, Dr. Dennis and Madam Chair, I am requesting that we can visit Indy and recognize those Read Bowl kids. I think we did that last year.
We did.
And I just think it's important, if our board members can go and just congratulate them in person for all that they did. Because I think I put down 650,000 hours of reading. And then the second thing is, before the school year's out, and I know that testing is going to be starting up and preparing for all that, if there's any time on your calendar, I would love to do a few more visits to our schools. Just to, like we've had, students have worked hard, teachers have worked hard, our administrators, everyone, our classified staff. So I am requesting if we can get that, those couple of things on the calendar, I would appreciate it.
I think we can probably handle that. Thank you. I appreciate you bringing that up. Ms. Whitaker?
I just wanted to congratulate all those who were recognized tonight. I especially wanted to just recognize Julie Starnes, who was awarded the Jim Kennedy Award from the Stanley County Arts Council. I am a product of Jim Kennedy's drama class for four years while I was at West Stanley. And that was a privilege and an honor to have the ability to be in a class and learn what I was able to learn from him. He was just truly a once in a lifetime teacher, I believe. I also too just wanted to say, and I know I mentioned this last month in our board meeting, that we, I believe that Indy School Edition is a step in the right direction. I know we have had a lot that has gone on the last couple of months with that or the last couple of weeks with that. I just want to encourage the county commissioners and the school board for us to just continue to work on the relationship that we have with each other. I feel like that's very important, that it is important that we work together to adequately support our schools. You know, we have to account for today's needs, but we also have to plan for the future of this school system. It is our job and it is what we were elected to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lefler?
I also concur with everything that everybody's been saying. Everybody up here on this board is fighting for our schools, for the public schools. It seems like the loudest voices are of those that are against the public schools and parents that don't have their kids in the public schools. The parents that have their kids in the public schools, they need to speak up because our local and state representatives need to hear from them that when they have on the top of their agenda for the state, education's always first, but they don't fund us like that. So I just want everybody in our county, especially those that have their kids in the public schools, to speak up to the local representatives and our state representatives. Because we're just a small group of people, but if the public speaks up, then we're likely to have something done. Thank you.
Thank you. It's always hard going last because everybody says all the good stuff before you get to go. But I do want to just note that it is Autism Awareness Acceptance Month. It's near and dear to my heart because I have a child with autism, so that plays a big role in our family. We have Battle of the Books coming up. And I know Dr. Dennis mentioned School Library Day and I'm a little sad that I'm not going to get to help judge Battle of the Books this year because we had already scheduled our work session, so I apologize. Because that was a lot of fun last year and I really did enjoy that. Special Olympics is being moved, thanks to the weather, but we'll get it in there. I do encourage board members to, maybe you can shoot over before work. It's always a good time. The kids are really excited.
That's me.
Oh, no, me and you. Our officers do the torch run. It's just a really neat thing to experience if you haven't ever done that, to be a part of that.
And let me add something. Make sure you get a hot dog because my husband's grilling them.
Nice, okay.
He and Rick Rosman.
Grab you a hot dog. So I'll just encourage board members to attend that if you can. And I wanted to thank Ms. Starnes for bringing the bookmarks. I look forward to going home and looking at this artwork and seeing what our students were able to produce for that. And also, a little shout out to North Stanley High School FFA for the flowers. Those flowers that they grew that we were able to give out to staff were gorgeous. They were just really beautiful. I walked in, I was like, oh my gosh, look at the flowers. And I was told that's where they came from, so that was a really neat touch. I think that's all I have. All right. Our next scheduled board meeting is May 7th, 2024, in the Jean McIntyre Room, beginning at 6:15. And up next, we now have Personnel. Sorry. Dr. Carter?
Madam Chair and board members, if I can call your attention to the Personnel Agenda. Of course, there's two sections. And the first section is for your information only, for your review. Section two does require your action, so at this time, I'm asking for your approval, please.
I move to approve Section Two of the Personnel Agenda.
I have a motion and all in favor? Any opposed? Section two, that's passed. Thank you. If there is no other business, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? We are now adjourned. Thank you.